Before we begin tonight's meeting, at the request of my good friend Bob Lambert, we are going to ask you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The meeting will come to order. Welcome to the 2023 Plymouth Town Meeting. Robert's rules will be the rules of order for this meeting. Only legal voters of the town of Plymouth, Vermont, who are present may speak and vote on articles at this meeting. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator, me. Please stand to be recognized and state your name clearly. All motions must be made and seconded. A motion can be amended, and that amendment amended once. Each person will get one chance to speak during any debate before anyone can speak a second time on an issue. I will allow one follow-up question in the case of a question answered by a town official. No one may speak more than twice in debate on any question, the exception being the Select Board answering questions. Please use the microphone so that everyone can hear you. Let's get on with the meeting. Small print. Warning: The legal voters of the town of Plymouth are hereby warned to meet at the Plymouth Municipal Building at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 6, 2023, to transact at that time business not involving voting by Australian ballot or voting required by law to be by ballot. The polls were opened Tuesday, March 7, 2023, at the Plymouth Municipal Building from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM for the purpose of voting by Australian ballot. The business to be transacted will include Article 1, to elect town officers for the ensuing year by Australian ballot, moderator, selectman, lister, trustee of public funds, and cemetery commissioner. Article 2, to see if the town will vote $13,316 for human services to be allocated as follows: A, the American Red Cross, $250; B, Black River Area Community Coalition, $500; C, Black River Good Neighbors, $500; D, Black River Valley Senior Center, $3,000; E, Fletcher Memorial Library, $1,200; F, Green Mountain Economic Development Corp., $323; G, HCRS Mental Health Services, $568; H, Okemo Valley TV, $800; I, Plymouth Historical Society, $500; J, Plymouth Memory Tree, $250; K, the Atakwechi Health Foundation, $600; L, Senior Solutions Council on Aging Southeast Vermont, $300; M, Southeastern Vermont Community Action, $400; N, Tyson Library, $500; O, Visiting Earth and Hospice, $2,150. I said, I meant hospice. P, Vermont Center for Independent Living, $175; Q, Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force, $100; R, Windsor County Mentors, $500; and S, Windsor County Youth Services, $400; and T, Women's Freedom Center, $300. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise $1,288,741 in taxes to pay estimated expenses in the amount of $1,647,441. It then states Article 4, 5, and 6 will be voted by hand from the floor at March 6, 223, in-person town meeting, well, as are Article 2 and 3. Okay. Article 4, to see if the legal voters of the town will authorize the Select Board to purchase a fire truck in the amount of $500,000, of which $400,000 will be raised in taxes over two years, and $100,000 of which will be contributed to the Plymouth, by the Plymouth Fire Department. Article 5, to see if the legal voters of the town will authorize the Select Board to establish a reserve fund to be called the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund to be used for the purchase of a fire truck in accordance with 24 VSA 2804. Article 6, to see if the legal voters of the town will permit non-residents to be appointed as town clerk, treasurer, and collector of delinquent taxes in accordance with 17 VSA 2646A. And Article 7, to transact any other necessary and legal business. Dated at Plymouth, Vermont, this 2nd day of February 2023, Jay Coleman Chair, Rick Kaminsky, and Keith Capellini. Article 1 will be decided by Australian ballot tomorrow in Town Hall. Article 2 is to see if the town will vote $13,316 for human services to be allocated as follows, as I read before. Do we have a motion to put Article 2 on the floor? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second it? Do we have any discussion on Article 2? Yes, Anne?
Just really briefly.
State your name, please.
This is Anne Brown. I represent the first memory tree. And the town has generously provided $250 each year for memory tree. And in our report, it says, we would say something about the funds that we raised in the past year that, from an appeal that went out, read about when we submitted this report. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the people who have been very generous. Since our last town meeting and prior to that appeal, we received $725. Since the letter went out, this year we received $4,885, which is really quite wonderful. The grants that we gave in 2022 totaled $5,773 and then included one scholarship. We provide scholarship awards to Plymouth graduates from the high school in Woodstock. And last year there was one. This past year graduation in 2022, we had three graduates, and we gave them a total of $1,200 in scholarship funding. They go for a semester and report back that yes, we finished, and yes, we're continuing, and we've released the grant funds. And so that's what we have given so far in 2023. Fuel, all sorts of things. So please, don't be shy about it if you have.
Is there any further discussion on Article 2? If there's no further discussion, we will vote Article 2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It appears the article is passed. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise $1,288,741 in taxes to pay estimated expenses in the amount of $1,647,441. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we? Article 3 is on the table. If no one objects, I am gonna, and it's your budget article, I am gonna ask the Select Board to make a presentation as to the nature of this article that may ask many of the questions you have to begin with. Jay?
Yes, we just wanted to give you all a very high-level look at the finances of Plymouth. The first slide shows the reserves that we have. The big yellow pie is the highway equipment reserve. We have office equipment. The red is the reappraisal. The light blue slice of pie is the building reserve account. And the dark blue, medium blue, I should say, slice is the ARPA funds that are left. And those are about $130,000. So, first look at the highway reserve. We started out with an account balance of $417,000. This year, we purchased a loader, and will also be replacing a truck. Both of these, by the way, were scheduled for 2024, but the timing seemed right for the loader. We had the money. The highway truck was totaled in an accident, and will be getting $100,000 in insurance. So we expect to spend around an initial $200,000, plus or minus depending on the truck. And that'll leave us a balance going into next year of about $60,000. And by the way, if you look at the budget, every year for like the last five years, and looking ahead, we've assumed that we would appropriate $130,000 to that fund. The building project reserve utilization, we're going to use $130,000 as the ARPA funds, $160,000 of the building reserve, and $65,000 of the office equipment reserve, totaling $355,000. We'll be using $595,000 from our $1.1 million general fund account. That'll leave about $0.5 million in that account, and that will provide adequate cash flow over the course of the year. So, as we deplete those reserves, both the highway expenditures and the building project, we expect that $928,000 to drop to $216,000. And as we hit financial year 24 again, the highway reserve fund will be replenished with that $130,000 that's in the budget. Just a quick overview of the municipal tax rate. It has stayed pretty steady over the last seven years. You'll notice on the screen, financial year 2022, there's a gray bar with a little bit of green at the top. That represents, we're using about the same amount of funds every year. That little bit of green there is where we return $200,000 from the general fund back to the taxpayers. And year over year, in that same seven-year period, you'll notice that taxes are the blue line, and they've stayed relatively consistent, about $1.2 million a year. Inflation is that yellow line. And then spending is the green line. So the spending has continued to rise. And you may say, how are you raising this much in taxes and spending this much? That gap is filled by government grants and the payment in lieu of taxes program through the state. So we get a lot of highway funds and different funds for projects that we're working on. So that's how the difference is funded. So if you own a home in Plymouth or a piece of property, we just kind of wanted to give you a sense of the breakdown. This example is of a $300,000 property. Your taxes would be $6,750 a year. The little blue pie shows $1,560. That is your Plymouth municipal taxes. The big yellow part of the circle, $5,190. Those are your school taxes. So just to put the municipal budget into perspective. And just looking ahead, we are going to be taking out a bond for the renovation work on the Town Hall. That annual payment is going to be $74,000 over 20 years. So we're going to add $74,000 to the budget, starting in FY '25. We're going to have some fire truck discussion later, so I don't want to get into the details of that now. But the assumption is, is that we, and this can be discussed on the floor, I think we've changed our thinking a little bit. When we proposed the article, we said two years. It might make more sense and be easier on the taxpayers for four years. And just to illustrate that, presently, your $300,000 home, the tax rate is .5231. Your estimated tax as of this year is $1,569. Going forward, with the bond and the truck payment, your tax rate increases to .5937, and that's about a $200 increase for the bond and the fire truck. And of course, the fire truck payment ends over four years. And that's what we got.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further discussion on Article 3? This is your budget article. Are there any questions about the budget? Okay. Are you ready for the question? Okay. Article 3, we are gonna vote to see if the town will vote to raise $1,288,741 in taxes to pay estimated expenses in the amount of $1,647,441. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. Article 4. Yes?
I'm just gonna ask for a hand vote, not a hand vote for a paper ballot.
We just passed.
At the end or at the?
A paper ballot vote for what?
For the following articles, 4, 5, and, well, let's see, definitely the fire truck issue and the Article 6. So 4 and 6.
Okay, so that article's not on the table yet, and...
I can wait till the article?
When an article is on the table, I will call for a vote, and at that time, you can call for a hand vote or whatever you want to do.
For ballot.
Okay, well, that's fine. Article 4, to see if the legal voters of the town will authorize the Select Board to purchase a fire truck in the amount of $500,000, of which $400,000 will be raised in taxes over two years, and $100,000 of which will be contributed by the Plymouth Fire Department. Do we have a motion? Yes? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second on Article 4. Who would like to speak on behalf of the fire truck? Perhaps the fire chief? Kirk, why don't you stand up and just explain our rationale here?
I'm Kirk Turner, Fire Chief here in Plymouth. Why we come and ask the people is, we've tried for three years, trying to come up with the money by either by getting a used fire truck to try to reduce the cost, or by FEMA grant. We got turned down on the FEMA grant after a year. We really don't know why we got turned down. I suspect it's because we're a small town, and it's probably by the number of calls that our department makes. So we make about 70 to 80 calls a year. These other departments make 800. So it's a numbers game, you know? It's the federal government. They look at numbers. As far as the used truck, we look, and for one reason or another, it didn't fit our requirements or what we were looking to have for a vehicle. The other thing about a used truck, most of them were 10 to 15 years old. So we figure about a 30-year life on a vehicle. We're pushing that envelope right now. One we're trying to replace is 32 years old. So if you break the numbers down, if you buy a used one that's, say, 12 to 15 years old, and you pay, most of them are $250,000 to $350,000, I don't think I have to do the math for you. It's half-gone, it's life. It's not probably a good deal for the taxpayers of this town or for us using it in the fire service. Things have changed. I don't have to tell you. Technology's changed. And so we're, at the end, after about two and a half years, we came to the SLAT Board and asked them if we could work out something. And what we proposed here is what we've worked out. We've been working on this for about three or four months for the SLAT Board. And I hope that all of you support this. Any questions?
Hey, this is Zach King. What's the alternative if we don't get fire truck?
What is the alternative? Well, we've kind of lolled around. The alternative, probably in my mind, people have asked, you know, in some of the discussions, we've had a couple of open discussions here, whether on Zoom or whatever. And so I went to some of the surrounding fire departments, particularly Ludlow and Bridgewater, and asked their chiefs. Kind of, while I was thinking, a lot of you know our schools went this way. We closed our school because of the price, and we send them to another school, whether it's Woodstock or Ludlow, whatever. So I asked their chiefs, would they be interested or ascertain if we couldn't operate as a fire department? Whether it was we had, we didn't have the right equipment, meaning our pumper broke down, or we didn't have enough personnel? Would they be interested in covering our town? Kind of like we asked Ludlow and Woodstock to do for our ambulance service. And they both, without a quill, said no. We have a commitment to our own town. If we were in your town for, say, a CO call, and we had a fire call in our own town, our SLAT men would, and our voters would run us out of town. We don't, one, we don't have enough voter, or enough volunteers and staff. Our own department's really to full. So they have their own commitments. There's probably some of you can see other towns raid around or suspend way more money than we have. Killen put a new fire station in. Bridgewater put a new fire station in. Woodstock made all kinds of renovations. So I hope that answers your question. It's kind of an unknown. I mean, maybe that truck will do another 10 years, but I'm not counting on it. That's why we're here, asking you. Any other questions?
Mark Fletcher, so just curious, what's the process? You mentioned two years versus a four-year repayment. Like, how does that get the ballot? Jay?
Yeah, so we'd like somebody to make a motion to amend that to four years.
I'll make a motion to amend that to four years.
Okay. We have a motion. Let me make sure I get this straight, Bob. To amend the article of which $400,000 will be raised in taxes over two years to read four years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there any discussion on, a second? I'm sorry. Not perfect. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Yes, ma'am.
Why can't it be longer than four years? This truck is gonna have a life of 30 years. Why do we have to pay it back in four years?
Well, that leaves a couple of options. We would have to get a bond if we wanted to do long-term financing. Short-term financing is available, I believe. Five to seven years, is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, that's a possibility. We could look into. Requires interest, which, if, you know, people aren't opposed to that, that's, you know, it's on the table. You couldn't...
So why couldn't we get a bond? There's this financing. It's basically the same thing. It's a non-bond thing.
And there's a lot more work involved in the, in the bond, which we, you know, we just experienced that with the building. It's not as easy as the other avenue.
We just, we have to prove the bond for the building. We're gonna have a reappraisal. You know, there's only so much people can afford. Everything keeps going up. And a great town needs to be more responsible and see, you know, spread it out more than even seven years.
That's a good, can I speak to that?
Yes.
I mean, that's a good point. You're absolutely correct. I think, I mean, we have, you know, to add to Kirk's presentation, we've gone back and forth on this now for the best part of, you know, four or five months. I think there's two avenues to the conversation. One involves the financial element of it, which is not good, whoever you want to skin the cat, because there's a lot of things that have added up over time that we need to put out money for. And the other is just the fundamental notion of having a viable fire truck. And there've been several people here. Steve Howner's one of them, who made, you know, and Steve there, the other Steve, Redonis, they both made great presentations on, you know, the viability of the current truck and why it's important that we have, you know, a real fire truck in the town, which we really don't at this, you know, at this juncture. And there's also, and Kirk, you didn't mention this, if you did, I didn't hear it or wasn't paying attention, but the insurance element to not having a viable fire truck is a very large piece of this puzzle as well, because, you know, for the most part, depending on who you have for insurance, the response time of your local fire department determines your premium. And your premiums would go up a large extent, you know, for most companies, not all, but if you don't, if we don't, can't provide, you know, a viable fire response. And, you know, a 35-year-old truck, two-wheel-drive truck, yes, you can chain it up, yes, you can do a lot of things, but at the end of the day, it's hard to make, you know, an argument against why Plymouth doesn't have a modern four-wheel-drive truck. So that's one issue. The other issue is, how the hell do we pay for it? And yeah, there's a lot of different ways to do it, but, you know, when you guys first came to us, you know, the truck was about $300,000, yada, yada, $100,000. Given what's been going on in the world for the last two years, now it's $500,000. If we wait anymore, it's gonna be, who knows? So how do we pay for it and get it here? Well, you know, unfortunately, it looks like we gotta raise taxes. Yes, we could do a bond, but that requires more time, legwork, more banner-ing around. The longer we banner around, the older the truck gets. Steve, you got a piece of rust with you, right?
I do. I want to kind of, this is, this is what falls off the truck right early, of the bond. We pull it in, we find little pieces of paint that it was held together with paint on that. I think the other, the other part of it is, I think it answered it with pepper. I think part of the financing is, if you go through a bond, there's no option to pay it off early. If you take a loan, on a four-year loan with that, if for some reason, there's a windfall of money of some sort, we can pay that off early and save on interest rates on that, which saves everybody money down the water.
Yeah, yes, in the back.
Yeah, Elliot Rubin, I just wanted to ask you if you could speak to the difference between, let's say, financing it for two years or five years or seven years in terms of how much interest you're gonna pay over the life of the loan.
So we didn't calculate it out that far. It's 5% interest. We, we hadn't thought that far to, you know, finance it for five or seven years. It just seemed like it was something that made sense to do over a shorter period of time, like four years. But we could, we could probably figure that out, how much we wanted to borrow, and... Give us a minute.
In the meantime, is there any further discussion?
Is there anything that would require taxes to go back down by the equivalent amount after we pay it off that loan?
Let me clarify your question. Are you saying, would the taxes go down? Or would, is there anything that would require them to go down?
Would taxes go down? Is this like we're considering?
After we pay it off?
Yes. And so, just back to that slide, if we were looking at the fire truck, an annual amount of $100,000 a year over four years, that raises the average homeowner's, say you have a home that's worth $300,000, that raises your taxes just about $100 bucks, a little under $100 bucks a year. So if we spread that over eight years, it would raise your taxes, say, $50 bucks a year, plus interest. Yeah, Bob? I'm sorry.
Right.
Mr. Moderator.
Bob Lambert.
Yeah, I don't care. You throw stuff around kind of fast forward. What I'd like to see, it's $100. You keep the $100 in there forever and ever, and every time we need it. You keep the $100 in there forever and ever, and every time we need a truck, there's something there to cushion what we have to raise taxes on, instead of giving back. Just keep that in there. A truck plan. Pay for it every year for the next 100 years.
That's Article Six. That's Article Six.
Oh, it is? Sorry, I'm only holding the book. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
This past fall, I saw a house fire on Lunds Hill. And you don't want to see that. Everyone got out and everyone was safe, but my dad, who's 80 years old, went with fire extinguishers. Steve came with a fire truck. I'm very thankful that the people got out, that it was good weather, and that we had seen ones who was able to come at 9:00 on a Saturday night. So I didn't mean to get emotional, but I know we'll all be talking about the cost of a tragedy in that town if we don't do something about it.
Wait. Anyone else back in the back, all the way in the back? Is that you? John?
Yeah, just looking at enthusiasm for young people to come into the fire department. A new truck helps with that. They've got something to look toward and to work for, for something good for the town. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak before Steve speaks again?
Could I?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention, currently, we spend about, in the low 40s, $40,000 a year for the Plymouth, the Woodstock ambulance and the Ludlow ambulance to cover us. If we were somehow able to convince a fire department like Killington to cover us, they are now adding full-time staff. I think the new fire chief, $70,000 a year. The amount they are spending on fire trucks, I think they've probably got a million-dollar pumper up there, a brand-new firehouse. We're going to have to participate in that capital spending and annual expense. So I think supporting our own fire department for many reasons, but the economic sense is there also.
Any further discussion out here before Steve speaks again? Go ahead.
Just, just a couple more things on that. So I know some people have done their homework and looked into what the cost of what insurance would be. So even if we were supported and serviced by a surrounding town, that still affects your insurance because it's response time. So in the typical, I, I got these numbers from somebody, I won't mention their name, but a $300,000 home, which we have up here, the typical insurance, you'd go up 20 to 25% on your insurance, but the one particular person that I spoke to, it was about $300 a year just for the insurance. But what happens is that you get into a high-risk pool, insurance companies will drop you, and then you have to go to like Lords of London, you know? So there are, there's, Lloyd's of London, not well. But there's something with the Lord, I don't know. So that, I think that's a big part of it as well, on that. To think about, you know, when, when we do get new apparatus, you know, it, it helps us, even if we are shorthanded, we have dependable apparatus. So when we get on scene, we're, we're not as worried. You can't say that it can't happen, but, you know, we're, sometimes we can be lucky to get there with this if we broke down with that. And a four-wheel drive will allow us to get, get there a lot easier than that truck will. And if we have a mud season, chains or anything do not work. Four-wheel drive enhances it. It's still not the end-all, but it certainly would help that. I think the four-wheel drive only adds about 10% of the cost to the truck. So, I mean, some people go, well, why don't you put chains on it? But, you know, 10% to, to get down the road at a faster pace. And when you get on a road going to Lunds Hill or Hale Hollow, whatever, if you need, you know, you could stop, put it in four-wheel drive, and you're back rolling again. So that's, that's what I got.
Okay. Okay, remember, we are, have an amendment to Article Four, not the article right now. So the amendment states to amend Article Four to read, "To see if the legal voters of the town will authorize the select board to purchase a fire truck in the amount of $500,000, of which $400,000 will be raised in taxes over four years, and $100,000, which will be contributed by the Plymouth Fire Department." All those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment, say no?
No.
The ayes appear to have it. Okay? So we have amended this to read four years. Now we are back discussing the original article as amended to read four years. Any further discussion on the article? Nothing? Okay. We are gonna vote to see, vote Article Four, which reads at this point. Yes?
So now can I make the motion or?
What is your motion?
I would like to take this to paper ballot. This did not get on tomorrow's ballot to the time restraint. So, you know, information wasn't put in there on time. And plus, you have the right to vote in private. Plus, there are people here that do not like to vote when we vote by hand. So I would need that, this to be seconded to do paper ballot.
Okay.
Then we need a certain number of people to also raise their hands. And I don't remember what that number is.
Seven.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of a paper ballot, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You got it. Paper ballot. This is what's gonna happen now. Okay, we're gonna vote Article Four by paper ballot. Okay? Yes means you pass the article, no means it does not. I am gonna call on Steve Redonis, Karen Evans, and Jay Coleman to be my proctors for this ballot, okay? I'm gonna supervise the ballot. You are going to, you're gonna pass out the ballot. I'm gonna need Elaine, do you have the town checklist? We have to make sure that only legal voters of the town of Plymouth vote. And I have a pile of little things in here, I think. What's this? Australian ballot tickets. Look at that. Well, they're not Australian ballot tickets, but they're, ah, they're blue. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why are they called Australian ballots when we vote in America?
That's a darn good question. Will you please tell us at next town meeting?
Isn't there another name?
Well, it's, it's, um...
What is that?
I don't know, it's in-person, in-person ballots.
Well, in-person.
You stumped the moderator, that's for sure.
So, Jay, what's gonna happen is, people are gonna come up one by one. We're gonna need a basket to put the votes in. And we're gonna need some pens.
I have pens right here.
Okay, we got pens. And they're gonna come up, and we're gonna have one person.
They have to come up and get their own ticket? That's a great idea.
Of course they have to get up and get their own ticket. And then they have to put them in, and you have to check off that they voted, and then the three of you are gonna count them. Each three times to make sure it's exactly what you want. Okay, so please, everyone form a line here. Let's do a little dance of the paper ballot. And since you're supervising, why don't you go first?
What? Every single resident votes. I will not vote except as a tiebreaker.
Registered voter.
Registered voter, that is correct.
Who's got the list? Karen's got the list. No, Elaine, would you get the list for me, please? You or Beth?
Oh, you wanna ask?
No, I'm, I, I, and what you do is you press your vote however you want to vote, and we're gonna check you off, just like you do when you come down here and vote and make sure only legal voters vote. And we're gonna do this right, and once.
Right, yes or no, and hold it.
But, my neck's good, but, you know. No, I got some arthritis, but the thing is, I have full range of motion. I'm gonna have a little pain. It's not really pain, it's just sore. That's gonna be with me the rest of my life. The stupid thing I did was hold it still. I died.
Well, nice job, nice job in town.
That's good, I never remember your name, so good thing you have it there.
Twice? I know.
Something will go down after that.
But the budget was too easy.
Hey, sweetie. How are you?
Okay, so Karen, Karen, technically this should be on the other side of that so that they put it in after they've been checked off?
You know, my problem is, I'm not old enough to ski yet.
How goes it, Wendell?
I'm calling for a paper ballot.
There are rules that are written by the state legislature on exactly how we conduct this meeting. I let people break them frequently, like I let people talk all the time. Come on, as long as it's civil, it's okay. If you stop getting civil, you're out of here, that's it.
Your U-Ray? Your Killian Ride? Just around the corner. Yeah, amazing. I love it here, though, I'm always glad when I come home.
Especially your road. Your road is a tough road. My road is a tough road. I won't buy a car without all your guys. Well, it's not gonna happen all the time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Jay, that's a very good job. I like the way you progressed it.
Thank you. I thought it was logical.
You know, you know, people complain about the job of select boards in small towns, and there's quite a few people who held your position who had much less training than you. They still get by because they use common sense. But the fact is, is there's a lot more demand for you to be a little more, and you've done a great job on reserve funds and straightening the finance out. It's really good.
Secret ballot. Is that because they're on fire trucks?
It has to be. Well, that's how Australia was started.
Well, and well, as the miracle is, it turned out they're not that bad people anyway.
To that article. Yeah, why are some? Don't give this lady matches.
I was gonna say, don't put your name on it. Mark, you're awesome. It's not like, it's quite a row. I don't know. I meant worse.
It's looking good. I thought it hurt, so.
Oh, no, he didn't tell me. I didn't hear, but I have.
I've heard the argument so many times, I don't get butts.
How are you?
It's pretty fun to get to try and fire it.
I'm so busy. I know you have a party tonight. Are you busy, busy now? I saw your hand. But doesn't take care of the whole.
She's gotta do my book, she can't do yours.
Mention from home again, that's it, yeah. Yep, yep, definitely.
That's good, no, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, it just kinda started first of the year, and I'm doing renovation, so. Low key.
Of course, we did call, we can come down for some.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Is your, your unchallenged?
Nope, I don't think I'm gonna have to open it because it would require me to have some staff. And I gotta payroll and all of that.
Take the part off, is it something you enjoy?
No. It's not for nothing, but I can't really take 25 minutes away to explain to somebody this, that, and the other thing, and get the auto special. Hi, Mark. I'm good, how are you? I'm good. How are you?
I think I checked you out. Thank you. I know you're, I know you're in Texas.
I'm voting yes twice.
All right. How are you? How are you?
Good.
Good.
I don't wonder where you're going to vote, but I'm voting yes twice.
Pickle it up together.
How do you spell that? Where we gotta go?
Zach.
They should meet you.
I do.
Is the Florida Department looking for new people?
I've heard.
Okay.
Uh, Zachary King. We just had a little kid who's taking all my time at the moment.
Sometimes we actually have different opinions. Not tonight, so.
I think that's why they're, they're running like question.
Johnny Dukon, how are you? Can you check on?
So, everybody's done. You three vote. I think about what I have to vote. It's all my mouth. I can't voice my opinion. And that way it's done. Good, how are you, Jim? Life treating you all right? What do you got up there?
I don't know.
Wait, let me see. Hold on. I certainly never catch anything like that. That looks like a striper to me, but maybe I'm wrong. Gentlemen.
Call you KJ? I don't know. Somebody named, say.
Who did I appoint, do you think? Oh, my pango.
Don't go there. Listen, there's a pencil on there. It doesn't matter what color it is. I'm gonna go with a K.
The only person that's ever done that. Everybody goes to see.
Well, I think I see the email. Thank you. And your check.
Who is that guy? Wait, who is that?
Minsky. I'm not even gonna make you get up, buddy. KJ. Yep, you're good to drop it in.
So, only one?
Really? C-A-T. All right. I've been busy, man. Not yet.
Is there anyone who has not voted, who is a resident of the town of Plymouth, who would like to vote? Is there anyone who has not voted? Meeting will come to order. Okay, we have all the ballots here? Okay, you three are my vote counters. I will ask each of you to count each vote and make sure that you agree on them. And then bring them to me and I will announce the vote. You could probably sort them into piles of yeses and nos.
You need another bucket? Yes. And there's not a whole. You need me to count? No.
Do you wanna put those in the?
No, no, no. Keep them separate, yes and no, in case somebody asks for recount.
Yes is here, no is in the bucket.
Yeah.
Yes. 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 Yes, yes. 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 No. Yes. 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 No. No. Yes. 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 Yes, yes.
Okay, so we got forty, fifty-four. Fifty-four and four nos. What are the numbers? Fifty-four yes, four no. Do you all agree? Okay, fifty-four yes. Four no. Article four has passed. Thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome.
Congrats, Fire Department.
Okay. Well, I'd say that was rather decisive. Article five, to see if the legal voters of the town will authorize the select board to establish a reserve fund to be called the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund to be used for the purchase of a fire truck in accordance with twenty-four VSA two-eight-zero-four. Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Article five? Yes, sir?
I'm a little confused. It's too... To be used for the purchase of a fire truck. Is this an addition to what we just voted on? Is this a reserve fund for future purchases?
Correct.
Could that be rewritten, do you think, so that it would reflect that?
Yes, would you like to amend it?
I would.
Okay, so let's see. How would you do that? To be called Reserve Fund to be used for the purchases of... Would you say purchase of future fire trucks?
Future fire apparatus.
Okay, future purchase. So, we want, we have an amendment and we are gonna amend it. Article five. Purchase of future, and we're gonna take out of a fire truck and we're gonna put in of future apparatus. Is that what you wanna do?
Future purchases.
Future fire, future... Fire. Apparatus. Okay, is there any discussion on the amendment?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. Thank you again, Anne. Is there any discussion other than that on the amendment? Okay, yes, sir?
I was just considering we would just consider adding an, and/or equipment. The Fire Department came to the town and said we needed air packs. I just, we would listen to what the Fire Department's discretion and I just think it would be... I'd ask you to consider. The product, yeah, and equipment.
Doesn't apparatus cover that?
No, I mean, basically what you're talking about here is a reserve fund that's usually for heavy, for large, large purchases. I mean, that's, it seems like that's what this is typical. Again, I shouldn't be speaking. You should.
Well, that was the intent, but if we feel like it should be modified for, to have equipment where it makes sense to us. Does the Fire Department feel like that's important?
It's not something we've discussed. I know a lot of that stuff is purchased from fundraisers. And like our chicken barbecue we do, our coin drops. We send out a donation letter, so we, we get a fair amount of money and most of the time our equipment, like air packs and turnout gear. Do you know what turnout gear is? Is what we wear, our helmet, our coat, and our bunker gear. So, our biggest expense, obviously, is purchasing a new vehicle. I mean, that gets into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, my intent would be, as of right now, I would say it's probably better just to keep it as an equipment thing as far as a vehicle equipment. I feel we can probably fund, fund our other needs right now. At some point that we get to a point where this inflation overwhelms us and we aren't able to afford to buy air packs of these things I spoke of, then we'll come back to the town and ask them for money or be able to amend that fund and be able to purchase from that for that. But I don't think at this point we need that.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes?
Yeah, Mark Fletcher, so we're talking about establishing a fund and then how are we funding the one? What are we talking about?
So, I think that will require us to develop a capital budget like we have for the Highway Department, thinking about when the life cycle of the existing equipment will come to an end and then we would project a cost for that and then add year over year to sort of build towards that. But we have, we don't anticipate funding it for this year. So, it's, but it's a reserve that, account that will exist so that we can do it. It's a mechanism that you're voting for.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Yes?
No, I was just gonna ask, how many other vehicles do we have and do you anticipate, do you have any idea of anticipation of having a purchase of others?
So, we have a utility vehicle, which we use for our ice rescue, traffic control, wildland fires. And that's also a used truck that we bought from Ludlow. We're looking probably in the next ten years to replace it, but we may only, the body is stainless steel, so we've been talking about just replacing it with a chassis and putting the body onto that. So, that would greatly reduce that. The other vehicle we have is a tanker, a truck that carries only water. And that's a two thousand and three. So, most of these, like I say, most of, at least our department, we figure a thirty-year life. So, in the next ten to twenty years, we're gonna have to replace both of those. And that's why we've discussed, you know, and the select board brought up that we probably, you know, we start putting money away for it now. I just, I don't have to do the math for you, like the pumper was, you know, was a half a million dollars. And if we put, you know, ten thousand dollars away or the Fire Department tried to fund it themselves, you know, say we make twenty thousand dollars a year in donations, we'd never reach that. It'd be like the carrot out in front of us all the time. We'd never, never get there to deal with. So, that's why we asked about having a reserve fund to try to at least offset some of that in the future.
Okay, so if you're talking about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, which is an excellent idea to have a reserve fund. In ten years, you'd have one point three million dollars in that fund, saying you don't buy anything in those ten years. You're talking about a tanker, even if it's five hundred thousand dollars and the utility vehicle, that would be two, two hundred, three hundred thousand or whatever.
So, that one hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we appropriate every year is for the highway equipment and...
There's no number, there's no number for that yet.
Yeah, we have no number about that.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, if not, we are not voting the article. At this moment, we are voting the amendment. And the amendment would be to make it read to see if the legal voters of the town of Plymouth will authorize the select board to establish a reserve fund to be called the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund to be used for the purchase of, and we would take out a fire truck and put in future fire apparatus in accordance with twenty-four VSA two-eight-zero-four. All in favor of that amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say no. The ayes appear to have it. Let's take that out. So... We are gonna vote Article five. Is there any further discussion on Article five before we go to a vote? Okay. Article five now reads, "To see if the legal voters of the town will authorize the select board to establish a reserve fund to be called the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund to be used for the purchase of future fire apparatus in accordance with twenty-four VSA two-eight-zero-four." All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. We passed Article five. Article six, "To see if the legal voters of the town will permit non-residents to be appointed as town clerk, treasurer, collector of delinquent taxes in accordance with seventeen VSA two-six-four-six A." Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion on Article six? Yes, sir?
Second. Just wondering why this is needed. Are we short of staff or having trouble filling those roles?
Yeah, so in previous years, you had to be a voter of your town to be run for that office or be appointed for that office. The legislature has recognized that, you know, small towns are having challenges. People aren't necessarily interested in that job or in that career path. And so, they've realized that they have to provide some flexibility and so they've amended the statute to allow us to elect or appoint from out of town. And so, we've had a, an advertisement run in the Vermont Journal for several weeks. We've had no applicants from Plymouth. We did run an advertisement on Indeed, which is an online platform. I'm sure everybody knows about that. And we are overwhelmed with applications. And so, we think we have some good applicants, but it all depends on you all giving us the okay to do that.
Any further discussion on Article six? Yes?
Karen Evans, I'd just like to bring up, if we have an appointed position and you're coming out of town, there's more, I don't want to say, there's more diversity, plus the select board, we will have, now that you've all made this an appointed position, you voted on that, we have more, when it's elected position, you don't have any say over your folks actually. With an appointed position, we, the voters, can voice opinions if needed, and it also gives the select board, who are our sort of officers and oversee everything in the town, so we will be able to check and see and make sure that our clerk is doing responsibilities that are given to her. And there's a lot of responsibility. The clerk can also, you know, appoint people to help out. We already have a Marg, Margot, correct, is a, is an assistant to our offices right now, and that legally the select board is able to do. So we have, there's a lot that goes on in the town, and a lot of records, a lot of accuracies, and the election process itself is quite a bit, so that's what I'd like to say in favor of that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article Six? If there's no further discussion, we will vote Article Six, "To see if the legal voters of the town will permit non-residents to be appointed as town clerk, treasurer, collector of delinquent taxes in accordance with 17 VSA 2646A." All those, yes?
Again, I would like to take it to a paper ballot.
No.
Then you wrote on it, you wrote on, you hand voted. That's what I'm asking, if that's just because some people do not like to vote on hand ballots, so that's up to you.
Are there six other people who would like to go to a paper ballot? One, two? I have two. Sorry, yes?
No. Three.
Three. Two.
That's fine.
One, two.
It's up to you.
Okay, the answer's no, sorry. We're going to vote to see if the legal voters of the town will permit non-residents to be appointed as town clerk, treasurer, collector of delinquent taxes in accordance with 17 VSA 2646A. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes appear to have it. Okay, Article Seven, "To transact any other necessary and legal business." Now, I'm going to start here because we were in a jam here. We had no town clerk. Beth Lombard had just retired, okay? So she wasn't working, and Beth stepped off. So it is my great pleasure, Beth, would you come up here, please? This is the funnest part of town meeting for me. I have the Vermont Public Service Award. This certificate is awarded to Beth Graves Lombard in recognition of service as interim town clerk to the town of Plymouth, awarded on Tuesday, March 6th, 2023. That's not correct, Tuesday, March 6th, but that's okay.
I love it anyway.
It's signed by Sarah Copeland Hansas, the Vermont Secretary of State. How about that? Okay, come through on our board, hold on.
I'll get on board too.
You get on board.
Is the sheriff's agenda, or do we have to remind him?
Okay, this is other business, and we don't meet very often as a town, there's more than 50 of us here, I think there's probably the only time of year you get 50 people in town, except maybe at a fire department barbecue. Okay, so does anybody else want to discuss anything or have anything to share with their neighbors?
Tom, we need to hear from the sheriff's department.
Okay, if no one objects, if no one objects, I'd like to invite a delegate from the sheriff's department to come up and speak at this time.
That'd be me. I deserve. Good evening, I'm Tyler Crum, the sheriff's department. As you probably know, you guys voted in a new sheriff this year, and some things are changing in our department, we'd like to bring it to your attention. We have spoke to the select board last month, I believe it was, we had a select board meeting here, and we brought our attention to you guys that we'd like to get away from just writing speed tickets. We want to protect you guys, you guys have a police department here, you call state police, they show up, not all the time, we'd like to though. So our new sheriff has been a plan that in the future here, hopefully after July 1st, that we will do, we'll still write some speed tickets for you and do that kind of enforcement, we'd like to be on the back roads more, we'd like to maybe stop crime before it starts. We talked to your select board and they came up some ideas, which are basically mimic our ideas too. Your select board would like us to be more present on the back roads, would like to detour crime. We'd like to do more traffic control stuff, which is enforcing speed limits as well. Emergency response, you guys have no emergency response here. What our hopes are, is that we'll, we'll do hours in your town, but we're also doing hours in other towns at the same time. So we'll be, there'll be more officers on duty, so that if you guys call, we'll be here like within 15 minutes, and there'll be more than one officer, rather than an hour and a half or not show up at all. So our goal is community policing, regional policing throughout the county, we're the only county that's doing this right now. So what our hopes are, is that if we can get you guys to back us with this, that our sheriff's department would be, your budget's $60,000 with us, that we pay over 12 months $5,000. That we also transition to, like I said, to regional policing. Instead of like the four-hour blocks that were here, you would see us in town probably more often, and what the idea is, is 12 to 16 hours a day, 7 days a week, but not actually being right here the whole time, we'd be in Bridgewater, Redding, Davish, Plymouth. We'll be covering all these towns with more than one deputy, and that way if there is a problem, say in Plymouth, that we have backup to be here for us. I'm alone here, there is nobody here but me, closest place is Ludlow, okay? If I, and there's no radio reception here. I can send smoke signals from out here and probably get somebody to come quicker than with using my radio. That's why if you fire department, we'd hear you use your radio all the time, because we can actually talk to somebody. But our main goal is to protect you guys, your property. Your property means a lot to you, you know, if somebody breaks into your house, steals from you, that hurts you, you know what I mean? You're scared, and when the police don't show up to talk to you, you're even more scared. Who's here for you? We are, we're going to be here for you, so we'd like to be more community oriented, like I have been in this town in the past, majority of people know me here. I was here for a long time and I tried my best to do the best here, meaning as I can, and we'd like to do that all over the county, for everybody. So Ryan, the new sheriff, wants to strategically place people in areas that make them protect more area with better coverage, and like I said, for you guys, for the taxpayer, for people that you expect to see the police by Mr. Johnson's house out there in middle of nowhere, Messer Hill, you know, your house on Camp Brown Road, no, your house out there in middle of nowhere. You expect to see a car go by every once in a while that says "Top" on it, because when it says that on it, it detours people from doing bad stuff. And you guys have a community here that is three-quarters of a population that's not here, they have property here, and that property gets damaged, broken into, and we don't know about it for six months until somebody comes up here. If we could be showing more presence in these places, maybe it could towards that from happening, and that keeps your insurances from going up, like you said about the fire department, that thing, well, things make a difference here in town. So we'd like to provide more law enforcement services as opposed to just sitting out here popping speakers all day long. Nothing to say that we're not going to stop some cars, we're going to be doing stuff like that, but we're going to be more prevalent, more seen in the areas that we're not seeing in right now. I mean, you see us sitting on Ruben Hunter. I want to be out, you know, on Messer Hill, I want to be out on Lines Hill, I want to be able to see people, meet people, and see, and have you guys come to us with things that you want, you know, in their town, and that's what we ask of the select board, you know, there are major concerns and things that they want us to concentrate on, and Rick actually gave us a list of stuff, and it's, same stuff that we want to concentrate on as the things I just read to you. So I mean, what we're going to do is have your point person here in town, select board needs something to come to me, and I think it's the sheriff's department, and we try to do what we can to do whatever you ask of us to do. If you have, say, up by Rick's house, you know, he's got a problem up there with, you know, some, maybe some vandalism or something, so we concentrate on that area a little bit, you know, the more we can do for you, the more you can bring to us, the better it's going to be for your town. I have paperwork here I'll give to you, Rick, I got a copy of everything for you. There's a year's worth of calls in town, and all your calls in town, you have Ludlow Police coming to your town, you have Ludlow Ambulance, you have Ludlow Fire, State Police, these are state police calls, and these calls are probably not police calls that they came to, they probably just stand over the phone or nothing at all. We want to be here for you. If you call with the stupidest call, whatever stupidest call may be, if you call, we're here to come, you know, that's what the point is, is the police should always come to your house, no matter what the smallest dollars for the worst call, you know, you pay for us to be here, we want to be here for you. So I mean, that's, it's a new concept with what's going on with our new sheriff, and we are behind him with the whole thing. Regional policing is the way it needs to be going in the future. It's not much money really for what you're paying, for what you're going to get, to actually have a police department in your town, it's well over a million dollars, and to have the sheriffs here, it's going to be a lot cheaper and easier for you guys, and it's going in the right direction, is what we really want to do. And like I said, safety is our number one goal, and yes, it does keep you safer by having cars slowing down out here, but to be the main focus of what we're doing, it takes away from what we're doing, we want to be police officers, and that's our main focus and our main goal. So, but there's a lot here that he wants to do, and it's going to take some time to get to where we want to be, but you know, we guarantee you 16 to 20 hours of patrol time a week, and that's, like I said, that's guaranteed time that we're here most of the time, where even outside that 16 to 20 hours of something happens work on it.
You had a question in the back?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think your EMT certified are...
Could you speak up, please?
I can try.
She's little.
Her body doesn't have big points. I don't think your EMT certified, or most of the sheriffs have any sort of certification in their BMS.
So all of our deputies are first aid and teacher are certified.
Okay.
I'm the instructor, I teach them all. We, like I said, this is kind of new, we're, he's been sheriff for a month, I talked to one of the new recruits today, and he would like to learn more medical stuff. So a goal in the future is to at least get the ones that, not, not everybody wants to do medical stuff, I really can't deal with the sights and the scenes and the things that deal with it, but there's some young people coming on that would be willing to, and I would be willing to help assist with it, because the more we can do, it benefits the town to have me here.
Absolutely.
I mean, I answered 90% of medical calls when I was here. I also do it in Redding for them as well. So the more training we're going, and I'll tell you right now, in the last two months with the new sheriff, I've had more training than I've had 11 years. Real training, you know, it's, it's been great. So I'm sure that he'll be receptive to anybody who wants to go to be like an ECA, a first responder, to an EMT, and, you know, he'll pay for that training, we'll do it, so it benefits us and it benefits you guys as well, and I think that in the future, Michelle, that you will see more officers trained in that.
It's a huge piece that's missing, you know.
It is, you have a disconnect here.
It's missing for smaller things, and I know in the past you've been present for that, and it just would be another asset.
We don't try to be present again, and that's, that's part of, it's not just police work that we're going to be doing, if you call the ambulance, we'll probably be coming to that, if you call the fire department, we're coming to that. It's a call of service, it's not just my house was broken into or I was in a car accident, it's everything, we do everything. And I don't know if you guys know this, and we joke around a lot about it as police officers, but in the medical field it's called the ABCs, airway reeling circulation, we call it ambulance before cruiser, and it never works out like that because we always show up first. Because you got to come from home to get in your fire truck, I'm already in mine, so we're always working the scene. Yes, Mr. Lambert?
I'm 100% for you guys, because when you guys were out of town, I argued to get you back in town.
Yes, sir.
What, my question is, when you were writing tickets, didn't that go to, to the cost of you fellows being in town? I just want to know where the extra money spent.
I don't handle the financial aspect of our department, so you'd have to ask these guys, but I was told by them last night that yes, that went to offset the cost of us being here.
It, it did, Bob, but it wasn't a financial arrangement really that, you know, it made sense, it didn't generate enough revenue to offset the, the cost. This plan is much better, the upfront cost is lower, the way they structured how the deputies and sheriffs work.
Right, we're actually going to save you money by doing that. You're not going to get, you might get some revenue for the tickets, it's not going to be $100,000 of revenue at the end of the year.
What?
If you get $20,000 of revenue, you're lucky, okay? Because we're concentrating more on the police aspect than the generating revenue for the town.
All right, so just let me ask, it's not costing us anymore, I, I just wanted to know the number.
So you already budgeted this money, this money that, this money's already taken out, if I'm correct.
All right, so we take it out every year, right?
This money, you've already been budgeting this money for the past 10 years?
20, probably.
Since I've been here, it's been 11 years now, so it's been roughly right around this for the last 11 years.
We used to budget between $120,000 and $160,000, this budget is $60,000.
Not to say that it won't go up over time. Not to say, Bob, like in the future, this might go up over time, I mean, like you said earlier, we live in a world where everything costs more money. This is a start for what we can do. If this works, you might find us here, you might pay a little bit more, leaving me here more often, or we stay with this, and all depends on how the future's going to hold and then, you know, what you guys want. You know, right now, this is a great plan, you're going to get, hopefully if it works out right, you're going to have police coverage in a town where cops don't come here, you know, and it's status thing, yes, sir?
Mark Fletcher, so, I mean, I, I like the plan, right, but it seems like we're kind of counting on all the towns in the county to buy in, right? Because if, if Bridgewater says no, and Redding says no, and you guys, between Harpland and Plymouth, obviously response time is not going to be great, so I just, I'm curious, like, is the board reaching out to other counties? How do we kind of ensure that everybody's getting on board?
So we already have towns right now that we contract with. A good portion of our towns are staying on budget. Actually, a few of our towns have raised budget to get on point with what we're trying to do. We actually have a few new towns that might be joining on for this. The more we can use the model that we're trying to do, the more we can get these small towns to join. I'm not saying, you know, we're not making billions of dollars doing this stuff here, you know, we're trying to make sure that we get enough coverage so we can do what we want to do with this, with this aspect. We already covered Redding, we already covered Bridgewater. Bridgewater said no tomorrow morning, then we probably won't be in Bridgewater anymore, but we're going to be having Redding. Needless to say, we're still being here, we'll still be here, hopefully, if everything passes tonight, you know, we'll still be here, no matter what. If it has to stay the way it is, the four-hour blocks and rewrite speeding tickets, I guess that's the way it's going to go, but it doesn't benefit you as a town.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying? You don't get a benefit, what are you getting out of me driving tickets out here all day long? You get nothing.
We're starting to loosen people here, so.
Yeah, so I mean, can anybody have any questions, any more questions?
Tyler, I got a question, more of a comment. When we sat down with the sheriff and met with the deputies and sheriffs, he also talked about some grant funding that they've been applying for, and I think the new sheriff is being really aggressive about seeking out grants, and he mentioned a couple of different ones he's applying for, and those funds will offset some of additional funds that we may have if we talk about down the road, if they have additional expenses. Right now, we're budgeting $50,000 a year, and that should cover it, and we're going to go through this year as a trial, an error, and see how it works out, and if we like it, then we can talk about a budget next year, but meanwhile, I just wanted to mention that the sheriff is out there aggressively going after grants to offset some of those expenses.
And what he put here is actually, he actually wrote this, kind of skimming through it, just kind of touching on bits and pieces for you, but he also says here that, you know, he's going to deploy resources the best that needs your town, which includes directed patrols and grant patrols, so the grant patrols won't cost you anything. I worked here today for four hours that you paid for, I worked here for another four hours that the state of Vermont paid for, and all I did was write tickets. But it doesn't say that in the future, I could be out here doing that grant, writing some tickets, and you call, and I come. Nothing to say I can't do that. So hopefully, you know, if you guys vote for us, we'd love to come help you out, we'd love to be here for you. love to be here for you.
Great. Thank you very much. And will you be around once I adjourn the meeting, if anybody wants to speak with you personally?
I can hang out as long as you want me to.
Okay, good. So I'm going to gavel the meeting closed. Do I have a motion?
I have something I need to add to me.
Well, you should have told me beforehand.
All the shuffle. Thank you, everybody, for coming, because it's a great turnout. This is a, you know, it's a great turnout, we appreciate everybody coming out. I wanted to take a little bit more of your time and to share something with you, which I think is a very prescient, important issue, and that is the topic of education, and specifically education spending. As you saw in Jay's budget, he mentioned, you know, the most significant part of the tax bill that you get in the mail goes to, you know, towards education spending. I mean, the article, I'll read it to you, you're going to vote on it tomorrow. Shall the voters of Windsor Central Unified Union School District approve the school board to expend $25,836,048? So, I mean, that's a big, giant number to wrap your head around. Now, just to give you a little bit of context, many of you know, don't know, a few years back, the town of Plymouth voted to join on to Act 46. As a result, our autonomous school board was closed, and via proportional representation, the town of Plymouth was awarded two seats on the board of the, it used to be the Windsor Central, now it's Windsor Central Unified District, they renamed it. So Plymouth has two seats on said board. And one of our, is Elliot Rubin, he's one of our two, two board members. He gave a great presentation here a few weeks back on the budget. We have another open seat. Josh, are you in the room? I don't think he's in here. Josh Linton, who is one of our constables, who held the seat a year ago, is, would like it back. He didn't get on the ballot, he would like to be written in tomorrow. He needs 1% of the electorate.
How do you spell his name?
Josh Linton, it's Josh, and Linton is L-I-N-T-O-N.
Good.
I would encourage everyone to write him in as our other rep. I, myself, held that seat when it was, you know, when it first came, for one-year term back in 2018. And I could tell you that it's a very important, a very important seat, even though it may seem like Plymouth has no say. The context in which we're operating, I want to give you some of that context, because when I was on the board, it was during the period when Redding was going through its realization that its school would be closed, and that is coming up here very shortly. And most of the meetings that I had the pleasure to attend were filled with angry people from Redding, you know? Well, how could this be? You know, how could you be closing our school? And how is this happening? And, you know, I would, the new guy, you know, ask, you know, well, who did you vote for? And, you know, did you vote for Allison Clarkson? Is she in the room? I know, I saw Dick McCormick in here. But, you know, oh, well, yes, of course, you know, what? Well, did you know she was the primary sponsor of Act 46? Oh, yeah. Okay, so I just want to read you this, because I believe in education, and I want everyone to understand what they're voting for tomorrow, 25, whatever it was, 26 million bucks. Now, this is an article that came out on February 27th by Rob Roper. He's one of the founders of the Ethan Allen Institute, the think tank up in Montpelier. And the title of the article is Vermont's Public Schools Are a Hot Mess. And I'll read it to you most of it, I won't read the whole thing, but just so you understand the, you know, the stakes involved in terms of this budget, what it means, why we need to have people over there, you know, whether they're just sitting there, they're asking questions, anything, you know, and Elliot Rubin, you can chime in at the end of this if you want, just to lend some context, but here we go. The Vermont Joint Fiscal Office released a 43-page report this month on the state of education financing, but its findings go much deeper than just the money. The system as a whole is broken, costs are rising, scores are falling. Beyond the numbers, members of Vermont's public school bureaucracy recently described a situation inside the schools where violence is on the rise, and teachers are literally scared, and administrators are at a loss. For a long time, Vermont had a reputation as a top education performer compared to other states, but that is changing. As the JFO report states, while Vermont has traditionally been better than the national average, over time, it is moving down on national test scores and closer to the national average. These figures are particularly striking when considering the continued increase in education expenditures per pupil in Vermont without a commensurate change in student performance when compared to national trends. Public school apologists in Vermont, both in government and the media, are quick to blame COVID and school lockdowns as the culprit, which, lest we forget, the teachers' unions wholeheartedly supported. But as you can see from this chart that ends in 2019, the decline in outcomes began long before COVID was a gleam in Anthony Fauci's eye. COVID certainly didn't help matters, as the most recent scores not featured here showed even further drops in performance. And this is the part that really, you know, gets you when you're talking about the budget now. The costs Vermonters have had to bear in order to achieve these declining student outcomes are staggering, as anyone who pays property taxes can attest to. For the 2021 to 22 school year, the average per pupil spending rate was $23,299, compared to the national average of $14,360.
Keith, Keith, I am going to adjourn the meeting, and anyone who wants to continue to listen to you can listen after the meeting, because this is not at all germane to this meeting. I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Fair enough.
No, I'm sorry.
It's school, we're voting on it.
I'll continue to read it.
This is town meeting, it is not school board meeting. We don't do that anymore. That's my point. You can speak as long as you want, you're the selectmen, this is where the selectmen meet. I'm just saying that people who came out tonight would not have expected that we would be discussing this. I don't think it's germane and other business, it's not something that can be voted on, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and you can keep speaking.
Well, it's absolutely going to be voted on tomorrow.